All right, uh, call to the Mammell City Council Meeting to order. Uh, first I need to let you know that Councilmember Mosley is traveling and will not be here tonight, and Councilmember Vapirzan is also traveling and will not be here tonight. So, uh, with that, we'll move on to the next item, and it's the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm gonna lead us in that tonight. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community, Lord. We'd ask you to be with the victims of the Hurricane Michael in the southeast part of the United States, Lord, as they're still looking for bodies there. We'd ask you to be with them and, and be with the first responders and be with the utility companies that are there helping to restore service, Lord. We'd also ask you to be with the people that are missing, Lord, and their family members, and help them during this time, dear little Lord, and comfort them as only you can. Lord, we're also mindful that we had a tragic occurrence here in Mammell. We had a murder last week. We'd ask you to be with the family of that victim, Lord, and comfort them and console them as only you can. He was a long resident of Mammell, and he'll be missed, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our troops that are serving overseas and protect them and keep them out of harm's way. Lord, we'd ask you to be with us tonight as we discuss the city's business and grant us wisdom and help us to discuss the issues without getting angry or vengeful at someone, Lord. And that, we'd ask you to go with us as we leave here tonight to help us to be an inspiration to those around us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item is, uh, special guests and announcements, and we have Ms. Alicia Gillan with the Mammell Chamber, and she is here to introduce, and I'm gonna let her introduce the student committee, but, uh, they're going to, uh, this is Mammell Middle School, and they're about to put on a race here in Mammell, and so they want to talk to you about it a little bit. So, Ms. Gillan?
Thank you, Mayor. Alicia Gillan, representing the Mammell Area Chamber of Commerce, 116 Daniel Circle. Uh, as our ongoing partnership with the Chamber of Commerce in the city of Mammell, we have to come and report on the wonderful and exciting things that we're doing in the Chamber. The Chamber is based on four major pillars. The first one is our business-to-business relationships and exploring those opportunities to support business. The second is community engagement and finding ways to reach out to our residents and helping them see the business opportunities and meet their neighbors. The third is leadership, and of course, leadership is strong. We like to build champions of our community. And fourth is workforce education, and this is where tonight's presentation comes into play. We, uh, believe that workforce education is so important to the success of our businesses because we want to lay that foundation very early on. So, we start that at the middle school level. And with that, I've been mentoring to these sixth, seventh, and eighth graders since the beginning of September on this project. Uh, and it was really neat to get these sixth graders when I first got them, and they were very nervous. Uh, made some phone calls, uh, some did not fare as well. Uh, but as they grow in confidence, it is neat to see them flourish and thrive. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over and have you introduce the students. You'll introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Harley Peach.
I'm Nicole Gillan.
And I'm Janine Richards.
Hi, we're sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at Mammell Middle School who joined a group called LEED. LEED stands for Leadership Entrepreneur and Activist Development. Our upcoming event is Mammell Run Like Cuban Stone 5K. This is our fourth annual 5K.
The race is held on Sunday, October 28th at 2:00 PM. The course is 3.2 miles. The course begins and ends at Mammell Stadium High School. It winds to the industrial park of Mammell. Please, um, after the race, you can join us for a spirited and fiery tailgate experience featuring our race sponsors. Each participant will receive a goodie bag, a medal, and a race tee-shirt. We will be recording first, we will be, we will be recording times, and first and second in each age and gender category will achieve a prize.
It's easy for racists to register for the event. They can go to mammelchamber.com and complete the honorary registration. Cost to enter is $25, and 15 for students. Virtual runners can also register online for $25. The additional fee to the sign-up day event, sign up the day of the event, each year we get bigger and bigger and have the average around 60 to 70 racers. All proceeds go to Mammell 5K, go, all the proceeds of the Mammell 5K go to the Mammell Chamber Scholarship Program. Every year we give two $500, $500 scholarship to Mammell seniors. We hope to increase this year. Would you like to join us for this year's Mammell 5K?
Thank you.
So, uh, this is also a call to action for each of the council members. We hope that you will join us for the 5K. Uh, as we did mention, there are virtual runners. So, do I have any virtual runners? Yeah, absolutely. Uh, but again, this does support our educational programs and our scholarship programs. The very, the, one of the most heartfelt parts about this is the children that actually started this 5K four years ago are now juniors in, in, at Mammell High School. So, next year, the recipients of the scholarship will actually be the ones who created this program. So, we, again, we appreciate your support, the City Council, and, uh, we'll see you at the event. $25, virtual runners. Got it? And an actual runner. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely qualify as a virtual runner, not an actual runner. Thank y'all very much, ladies. Y'all did an excellent job presenting tonight, and maybe you got about six or seven people that can sign up up here, and maybe you got some in the audience, too.
Registration forms will be right here.
Do you have to cross the line in the same day?
Bring the medal to your house, George.
You just have to pay the same day.
Yeah, the, I think there's a cutoff. They do want to use the, uh, road for the school the next day. So, I think midnight, the day of the race, may be the cutoff, so. All right. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the October 1st regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packet. Uh, are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I have no public comment cards on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. At this time, we'll have the, uh, financial statement review, and Ms. Vega will do that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, on your, at your seat, I handed out a revised page, a summary page of the financials, and I did this because I wanted to, uh, highlight the half-cent, uh, sales tax that's replacing the community service fee. And so that's, that's what the change is, um, on that sheet. So, we got, uh, $98,250 for, uh, September. Yeah, for Sep-, for September, uh, half-cent. This month, we've also, for Oc-, October, not, these are September fina-, financials, but for October, um, we've received, um, our first check from CAW, and that one was $93,000. So, we're trucking along. Okay. Can you go to the first slide? Thank you. So, um, we still have a very healthy fund balance in all the funds. Um, sanitation is down to budget 3%. Uh, the street fund budget is up 8%, and the general fund budget, I mean, general fund balance is up 18% over our budget. We have, uh, $2.5 million more than is required by the ordinance 438 requirements. Okay, um, you can see on this, uh, slide that I added the half-cent revenue, uh, sells, sales tax revenue. It's in the middle of the chart. County millage is up 3%, county sales tax is up 1%. Um, ci-, okay, and the city sales tax is up 14%, um, but that does not include, uh, you know, the five, the .5% that we just received. And franchise fees are up 1%. And the street fund, uh, the state turnback is, is down 4%, and I did look into that, um, because it's up in the general fund and it's down in the street fund, and that is correct. It is, it is reduced this year, but I don't know why. The state turnback is, is a fee that the state gives back to us, um, and they determine, uh, that number. Street aid is up 7%, and county millage is flat to prior year. Sanitation billing has moved to CAW. Uh, Central Arkansas Water, they are invoicing monthly, and as I said, we received our first payment, uh, last Friday of $93,000. The general fund administration is, is up 13%. This is due in part to the finance director and the HR director positions being filled. They were not filled last year until, uh, the end of July. Police, um, they're up 4%, and this is due to salary increases. Fire is up 6%, also due to fire increase, fire, salary increases and the benefits that go along with that. Parks are down 3%, and this is due to open positions. Seniors is up 35%, and that's because we had the new facility, um, starting in March. City services, um, are down. We had, um, an equipment lease that was paid in full in 2017. Um, professional fees are down, and, uh, we also received an escrow check, um, back for Count Massey Extension. And then this chart just shows our expenses in a different way. Okay, um, so if we look at the budget and we say, okay, what, if we say nine-twelfth of the budget should have been spent by now, which is 75%, um, where is our spending? And you can see that all departments, um, they're below the 75%, so they're, they're under budget. The street fund expenditures, the city is waiting on a reimbursement check for the third entrance of $72,000. In 2017, during the same reporting time, the city was waiting on a reimbursement of $198,000. So, we're pretty flat if, if those, when those come through. In sanitation, uh, personnel is flat to prior year, and operating is up due to the increase in tipping fees and vehicle maintenance. Are there any questions?
We got the.
Okay.
We got the check on Friday from the highway department also, the $72,000.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, we also will be handing out the, the budget binders, um, tonight after the meeting.
Okay. Wait. Councilmember Hope?
Just one more follow-up question from what I asked, uh, earlier. On the $98,000 that's, that has come in, now that's, how is that, what budget does that go into, Mr. Mayor? Is that replacing where the community fee was? Is that the budget that it was in? So, we're accumulating that, and that is non-appropriated funds is up, uh, you know, until we make a decision what to do with it? Is that right?
It is, no, it is to be used for police and fire. That's how it was stated in the ballot.
Right, I thought it said, but, but not limited to police and fire.
Well, it's public safety. It's public safety.
Okay, yeah, right, okay, all right. Um, I, I guess, I just wondered, you know, what, what that, where did it go or what happened to it when we did bring it in? So, this comes in on what regular?
Monthly.
We get it monthly?
Yes, sir.
Is that probably gonna be about the amount per month, do you think, or?
Um, huh? Um, that matches our projections, so that's good.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, it goes in the general fund, just like the community service fee went into the general fund.
All right, very good. All right, appreciate it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the general, or the financials?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the financials for September. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. And, uh, I did not want them to pass out the budgets before the meeting 'cause I didn't want y'all flipping through them and looking at them and all that. I'm sorry, I'm treat, I'm treating y'all like elementary students or something, so, yeah. All right, next item is department reports, uh, and that's done at the first meeting of each month. Next item is a procedural motion. I mean, I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been motion and second that we read all resolutions and ordinances by, uh, title tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, uh, at this meeting. Next item is, uh, new business. We have the first reading of ordinance number 962 establishing a master agreement standards, and you have a revised copy that was handed out tonight at your seat also regarding that. So, look at that instead of the one that was sent to you in the, uh, packet. Uh, we actually had some communications with AT&amp;T today, and so we made some revisions to that, uh, document. And, uh, after we do the reading, we also have Mr. Ronnie Dedman, who is the president of, uh, AT&amp;T Arkansas, Ms. Melinda Faba, who's the Director of External Affairs here, and they've got a presentation to make after we read the first, uh, or after we read the title of the ordinance. Madam City Clerk?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 962, an ordinance to establish standards for small wireless facilities in the city of Mammell, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
And I could probably go into a very detailed description of what these small cell wireless devices are, but I would rather let it come from the experts, so I think Mr. Dedman's gonna do the presentation, so.
Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. City Attorney, thank you all for having me. Mayor, if you remember, the last time I was here, I was, which has been five or six years ago, I was Director of External Affairs, but now I'm President, so I just had to kind of say that, kind of roll off the tongue. Thank you very much. And here's the other thing I want you all to know. I'm, I'm kind of one of you all in that I've got a house in Mammell, me and my wife, uh, she lived here for 20-plus years, and now we live out in the country, and when we get ready for city living, we're gonna move back to Mammell. 103 Marimar is, is where, uh, she lived for a period of time. So, I'm excited to be here, um, this evening. Uh, AT&amp;T has made a significant investment in Arkansas in our network over the last three years. We've invested $550 million, and a lot of that, some of that money was invested here in Mammell, and we plan to continue those investments, which is why I'm here, to talk about our small cell, uh, deployment efforts. I've got two very short, you all wanted a long presentation, right? I have two very short video clips I'd like to show you to sort of set this up, and then I'll talk a little bit, and then I'll answer some questions. We ready?
You're ready.
I'm ready.
Let me turn some sound on.
In fact, nothing about your connectivity happens by chance. Wireless networks are built and managed with extreme precision so that consumers get the best experience possible. Network managers can pinpoint exact locations where a lot of people are using data and video at the same time, which slows down your experience. The good news is, technology exists to relieve this congestion and expand wireless capacity right where it's needed. This technology is called small cells. Small cells add wireless capacity in pinpointed areas where network demand is high, like in crowded places, so that your smartphone can download data and stream video much faster. A small cell includes a small radio transmitter and an antenna. Small cells are one of many different types of communications infrastructure that work together to make your wireless experience better. Cell towers, also known as macro towers, provide wireless coverage for large areas. Small cells complement cell tower coverage by adding additional capacity for very focused and dense areas, like a city's downtown. In a crowded place, you might have four bars showing coverage on your phone, but downloading a video is taking forever. That's not a coverage issue, that's a capacity issue, and small cells can help. That's why location matters when it comes to small cells. They are installed within a few hundred feet of an area that needs more capacity. So, how do you get to benefit from this technology? Here's how it works. When a network provider identifies a location where people need more wireless capacity, they work with local governments to develop a plan to install small cells. Providers pay cities and structure owners a fee to install small cell equipment on utility poles. Working together, cities and network providers can deliver what everyone wants, a faster, better wireless experience. The equipment may be small, but its impact is big. As more and more devices connect to the internet, from our phones and tablets to cars and kitchen appliances, demand for wireless capacity is only going to grow. Small cells are an important part of the solution to meet our communications needs today and into the future. Working together to bring small cells to cities and towns around the country, we can have more of this and less of this.
Okay, one, uh, one more short one. Yeah, go ahead and roll it. This is just a couple of minutes.
Do you ever think about how information shows up on your phone or tablet? Probably not. That's because network providers are constantly designing, building, and improving mobile networks so that you can do everything you want to do, wherever you want to do it. In fact, nothing about your connectivity happens by chance. It takes precise planning and many component parts, like cell towers and small cells, to deliver the wireless experience you want and expect. Over the past several years, each generation of the mobile network has been faster, allowing us to do more on our devices. The next generation of mobile networks, 5G, will build upon existing infrastructure to be even smarter, faster, and more powerful. 5G will be much faster, but that's not all. 5G will be a game changer because of something called ultra-low latency. Latency impacts things like the time between pressing play and seeing a video start to stream. On tomorrow's 5G networks, there will be next to no lag time. That means data flashes over the network faster than the blink of an eye, literally. That means less of this and more of this. As networks continue to evolve, we will be able to do things wirelessly that we can't even imagine today, reducing airport delays and increasing highway capacity, while reducing pollution and saving you time and resources. World-class healthcare will be more accessible thanks to advances in telemedicine, like video doctor visits for routine issues in rural areas. Self-driving cars will traverse highways and navigate smart cities. Smart cities will become smarter, improving traffic flow, identifying leaking pipes, speeding emergency services, supporting education, and leveraging resources more efficiently to meet budget challenges. Virtual reality will become commonplace, taking us places we could never go before. Public safety will be able to work together to find missing children using smart cameras and artificial intelligence. All of this and more will be possible with advanced mobile networks. Network providers are getting ready for this future today by deploying small cells and investing in new infrastructure, and for good reason. The Internet of Things is about to explode with 50 billion devices expected to be connected by 2020. We need mobile networks with massive capabilities to handle the data that will travel to and from all those devices. So, what needs to happen to be ready for this mobile future? Cities and network providers need to work together so that consumers have mobile networks that can deliver more, better, faster connectivity. Around the world and across the country, communities are laying the groundwork for the 5G future that will be here before we know it. Will we be ready?
Okay, so, think of it this way. A few years ago, I had a cellphone, just one cellphone, and it did one basic function, place call, and that was pretty much it. Today, like many of you all, I carry two cellphones, just two devices. I have a Apple Watch, and then I have an iPad. That's four devices that I carry that are connected to our network, which increases the capacity. And you all demand that we do something so that you don't see, you don't have slow service, okay? So, that's why we want to, um, go forward with our small cell effort here. When you think of, uh, small cells, you could think of that in terms of us bringing the network closer to where you are. I could be here asking to put a microwave tower in the middle of Mammell, and you all would tell me no. I'm sure you would tell me no. So, the, the answer to that is our small cell deployment effort. The small cells are, uh, an antenna that's generally mounted on a, a utility pole that's just a few feet high. You come down the pole, and there's a radio on that pole, and we run fiber to the pole, okay? The difference in the small cell effort and the, uh, the microwave towers is the small cells don't cover as much area as the larger microwave towers do. So, because of that, we have to install several, you know, in a given area to do what we're trying to accomplish there. So, I mean, that, that's why we're here. We want to make sure that we bring the technology, uh, to your city, which is why we start, started talking to, uh, Mammell, uh, several months ago. We're working with 15 others, or 14 other cities in the state of Arkansas. We've got, uh, I think, five, um, agreements, ordinances passed in those cities, and we're hoping that we can work with you all and get an ordinance passed here. Caleb, thank you for, um, working with our attorney to incorporate some of the changes to your draft. We, we appreciate that. So, that's pretty much it in terms of the presentation. I'll, uh, address any questions that you have. Uh-oh, everybody has a question.
Councilmember Saunders, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, actually, I had two questions. The first one was for you, but I do have a question for him, too.
Okay.
You mentioned that there is some differences. There's changes been made to the new one on our desk when compared or contrasted with the same ordinance that's in our packet. I, I looked at the one that you laid on our desk, the new version of this, and I don't see anything underlined or struck out or anything. What changes were made?
Well, if you go to Section 5, it's where the first changes were made. Is that correct, Caleb?
Yes, uh, so go ahead and take a look at Section 5A2. Is slightly different. 5A3 is slightly different. Uh, a sentence was added at the end of Section 11C.
Which is gonna be toward the end of the document.
Which one's that?
11C.
And then there were, excuse me, there were a few, um, the, I call typographical or formatting changes is probably more accurate.
One of those was 4/2, right? The 10, we added the 10.
Correct.
Yeah. We, we added the word 10. We're, just had the numeral 10 on, uh, 4D2 on page 6 again, but.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I did have one question for you. You mentioned that you described the, what would be installed at the top of a telephone pole, or in our case, probably a streetlight post.
A utility pole.
Or a utility pole. And you said that it, it connected to a radio transmitter, and then fibers came up to that. Is there any wiring, we have underground utilities, is there any wiring to be done that would be above ground that, that we would drive by and look at or have to deal with? that we would drive by and look at or have to deal with?
I would say no wiring, no. So the fiber will, of course, be underground. And then we've got the radio on the pole, located somewhere on the pole. And then there's a short antenna, just a few feet tall, at the top of the pole.
Much like the one we saw in that picture.
Exactly.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Okay, Mr. Dedman, this will offer, all of the services will be offered that are offered now or is strictly data, data services?
No, all the services that you currently have will be, right. You'll just have a better experience. So the small cell nodes, as we call them, will help right now with capacity issues. But it also, as one of the video clips pointed out, will help us and you all get ready for 5G when we get ready to launch 5G in this area.
Councilmember Saunders mentioned that these would primarily, because we don't have above ground utilities except in the industrial park, that these would probably be on Entergy poles? Or would you be placing your own poles?
We don't have, we don't currently have an agreement with Entergy. So we would place our own poles.
And if I could step in here really quickly. So this, unlike some of the franchise agreements we've had that are dealing with a specific entity, this is just the overall ordinance that's going into place. And it was prompted by their coming to us. So we asked them to come be a representative, but they're kind of talking on behalf of the industry as a whole because there's nothing in this ordinance specific to them. It's just specific to that technology. And I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Okay, I just wonder if we pass this ordinance then, are we saying, "Go ahead" without some sort of amended franchise agreement?
Well, so it wouldn't require a franchise agreement in much the same way that we look at when they're running the cables through the lines. It's treated much more like the cell tower that if they're on private property, you know, they're leasing cell towers. But in this case, we're talking about in the rights of way. And so some of the discussions that we have had ongoing is whether they would put them on some of the city's structures or we've discussed with them about the light poles not being owned by Maumell by and large, but being owned by Entergy. We've looked at, in one case, one of the hypothetical locations might be on some lights in a park that the city does operate. But there isn't a separate franchise agreement. And it kind of makes sense when you think about it because the small cell doesn't serve a particular end customer. It serves whoever happens to be nearby using that node. But there is a fee that we charge for the placement of that pole.
$50.
Correct.
For a year.
For you.
Yes. Unless it's on a city-owned pole, in which case it's the maximum allowed by the FCC of 270.
Yeah, I mean, Caleb can show you. The FCC just passed some rules last week, I believe it was, or the week before. They're like 160 pages long. And part of those were taken directly from that. Some are slightly different, but yeah. So we can't go beyond what they're mandating in those rules and regulations.
Yeah.
But to be clear, I think we could go up to 270.
270, yes, yes.
Even if it's not a city pole?
Yeah, I totally agree with the, with the application. I think it's something that's needed. I think it's going to position us for the future. People aren't going to want to be here if they don't get the same kind of access in a town like Maumell that they get other places. My big, big, big concern is just the congestion in our rights of way. And we're already just having massive problems with the placement of additional facilities. So I'm thinking that even though there may not be direct costs borne, like we don't pay a certain amount for something. It takes manpower and equipment and so on to enter our own rights of way for work that we have to do on behalf of our citizens. And that's why I think that we need to be compensated as much as possible for that, given the circumstances that we're already seeing. I mean, the water line breaks, and it's not the person who's necessarily placing the fiber or whatever it is in the rights of way. It's other people doing work, and then our citizens' houses are being flooded and places in town are without electricity. And, you know, it's just one thing after another. So I would want to look at the compensation on this more carefully and not be greedy. Just think about what it's costing us today and how that many more fibers in our rights of way, how that impacts the cost to the city, either real or unrealized. That's all I have to say about that. And this ordinance, you say, is similar to what we have in other cities now? You said there are five?
Well, we're working, or have worked with a total of 15 cities in Arkansas thus far. And the rates are very comparable to what we pay Littlerock and Fayetteville and Rogers and the other cities, yes.
And then, yes, this ordinance was a hybrid of a few different cities and then tweaked with some stuff. I've met with Mayor Mike Hogan in Public Works, Jim Neary in Planning and Zoning, to put together something that was a little more customized. And I got a little bit rebuked this morning when some of the provisions that were in there might have been violative of the new FCC rules. And so that's what some of the edits were.
So the franchise agreements that talk about non-voice data, this does not apply? Non-voice data services that are provided?
I'm sorry? I'm going to get your question, but...
Franchise agreements say that, you know, that there can be a fee for non-voice data. And this provides data to a facility?
Well, it doesn't provide it to a facility, it provides it to a user, a mobile user.
Any user that's on it, right? So the difference is, if I'm, if someone's running a cable to my house, it's easy to assess a certain percentage of my monthly bill as a franchise fee. But these nodes are going to whoever happens to be nearby, which could be hundreds or thousands of different end users.
So the amount of data delivered to the box can't be used to determine a non-voice data capacity under a franchise agreement?
Well, I don't know. So the franchise agreements are for the use of the right-of-way, and then the end user is paying a bill on their, they're paying the franchise fee in their bill. One of the differences here is, who would you, and I don't even know that it's legal with the telecommunications act, but there's no one end user, right? Anybody who has a cellphone where they live in Maumell or Texas, who happens to be stopping near one of these nodes, will be using it, right? And so I don't even know that it would be practical to assess a franchise fee on the portion of the data used by that person when they hit that particular node as opposed to the other 500 nodes that they would have hit in different cities. Does it?
It's not clear to me, but we can discuss it ourselves. I just want to make sure that the city is being compensated for what it truly is costing us, truly costing us to have...
But that's going to be impossible unless you do it after the fact.
But we have history, we have precedence.
Well, not with these, we don't.
Not with these?
Yes, yes.
I'm just talking in general.
But the fiber's already there that they're going to be tying into.
Oh, because he said he was running fiber to poles.
To poles, he is. But it's, it might be five feet away, it might be 30 feet away.
I didn't understand.
It's not going to be a new fiber line coming down the boulevard. That fiber's already in place.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then, okay. Yes, and to clarify, if a new company that wasn't here was wanting to run fiber through all of the rights of way, that would come in through the standard franchise agreement. I'm sorry, if that makes sense.
The fiber they're going to tie into is already their fiber network that's here. And I don't know, I mean, worst-case scenario, it might be on the wrong side of the road. They might have to bore under the roadway. But that's where I think we're going to be limited to the amount of fiber laid in the right-of-way, additional fiber laid in the right-of-way.
Okay, and I still would like to look at those costs.
Okay, all right.
Well, just to, yeah, just to say this one more time. These are the rates that we're paying generally everywhere in Arkansas and across the country. I mean, there may be, you know, $5, $10, $15 different in different jurisdictions, but these rates are fair and equitable, we think, we think.
When you live on Miramar and your water line gets cut?
Okay.
I mean, it happens, though.
It does, it happens.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of the questions that I had were asked or answered between the discussions was, you know, is it only going to be on poles that are owned by the city and those kind of things? I wasn't sure if this was answered, but is there an ability to put it on buildings? Or is it always only going to be on utility poles?
Buildings are possible, yes.
Okay, I just didn't see that in there.
Yeah.
I got, you know...
Well, in some instances, not very often, we enter into agreements with private landowners. In Littlerock, we've got one location at one of the malls where we're not working with the city of Littlerock on that one. We're working with the owner of that property.
Well, and it is a different kind of city, Maumell is, in that we don't have a whole lot of utility poles, especially that are owned by the city. And so I just was, find it interesting that, you know, that wording was used whenever there might be a lot more opportunity for using different other structures. So that's why I was curious.
So the way it works is, we have a site acquisition team. They'll come to Maumell, and they'll look for the area where the traffic is the heaviest on our network. And if it's right here, then that's where we need to be. We can't be 2,000 feet that way or 2,000 feet that way. They, right, yeah, it's pretty specific. And it can be a pole, or it could be a building, or something like that.
Well, and a funny anecdote. Last week, I was, I had the good fortune to be able to go to Disney World, and I witnessed that kind of infrastructure working very well. I mean, there's a huge population in a condensed area, and I know that they use all different types of service, including these types of sites. And it does, it makes a difference. You know, if you're ever at a football game that doesn't have an, and you have the four bars, but you still can't even, you know, download an email.
Well, like the video said, that's not a coverage issue, it's a capacity issue.
Exactly.
And that's what we're trying to address.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Williams?
I was just curious. Thought about this when I was reading this earlier, and the difference in the microwave and the small cell. As far as public safety goes, I know that you can, you can find someone if their cellphone pings off of these larger towers. Would this be something similar? I mean, can you ping, can a phone be pinged off these small cells?
It won't have any adverse effect on that at all.
But is it possible that that could happen?
You mean, does it make it better? Does it make it better? I would say yes.
Because you're having more points of reference.
I didn't know if it, if you just had to come from a tower that's that big or these small ones would help in that situation.
I believe I'm correct in that, but I'll double-check it.
It'd be super cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott?
I just had one other question. That there's an initial application fee of $500, and that includes five cell locations? That covers five cell locations?
10, I think.
I'm looking at Section 11A.
There may be a...
I think the first five is 500, and any additional would be $50.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
$550, $50 annually for each small cell.
But we limit them to 10, I think.
Per application.
Oh, per application, though.
No more than 10.
Yeah.
Oh, 10 per application.
Yeah, 10 per, yeah, yeah.
I didn't quite understand the answer. It says right here, $500 for up to five small cells.
Yeah, okay, yeah, no, that's correct.
Yes, and an application can have up to 10.
Expound on that, explain.
An application could have 10 similar, I forget the precise language, cell towers in one application. It's $500 that includes up to five. After five, it's $50 per. So there'd be an additional...
With a maximum of 10.
With a maximum of 10.
So if they applied for 10, it'd be $750.
Okay, I got you.
I didn't see that in the ordinance, but it's probably...
Where's it?
That it's maximum of 10.
It's on page 6. An applicant seeking to construct or modify or replace a network of small wireless facilities at the applicant's discretion file a consolidated application for up to 10 substantially similar small wireless facilities and receive a single permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking back and, all right, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions for Mr. Dedman, oh. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, and I was trying to be patient in case somebody else asks this, but I'm concerned about more poles in Maumell. We, as a city, have fought long and hard to keep the aesthetics where we want them. And I don't want to see a bunch of power poles going up. Now, you mentioned that you've not contacted Energy to make arrangements to put these receivers, transmitters, receivers on top of their poles. Are you committed to doing that?
Well, let me say a little bit differently then. We've been working with Entergy, not just in Maumell, but in Littlerock, in Louisiana, wherever they are, to try to come to terms with them, to get on their poles. We haven't reached an agreement with Entergy yet. Yeah, we're talking to them. I mean, they're concerned about us being up in the power and that sort of thing. So negotiations have been kind of slow. But we're talking to them, trying to establish an agreement with them.
Okay, you had prob, I've probably heard this, and it just kind of went in here and out there. Is there any estimate at all at this point as to how many of these devices you're going to need in Maumell?
I can tell you that, and we'll do it in waves. The first wave will have four, okay? But then, the year after that, we'll have more, a few more. I don't know the number. And a year after that, we'll have more. So I can't say there'll be 20 or 100 at this point. Our site folks are out trying to determine that.
Okay.
So it just depends on usage, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yes.
There was an article in yesterday's Democrat Gazette.
About Bentonville.
About in Bentonville. And there was a comment made, there'd be 800,000 of these deployed throughout the United States by 2026. There's 13,000 currently, I believe is what it said.
Yeah.
But by 2026, there'll be 800,000 of them. So...
Yeah, so as we do more and more things with our devices, then we want to be, you all want us to be ready for that. When you all become a smart city, you may already be a smart city. But when you have autonomous cars driving around your streets, then you want to have the ability to handle all that. And that's what we're trying to do, pave the way for the future with 5G. Hadn't been easy.
And part of the problem with our streetlights, some of them aren't tall enough, I don't think either, is an issue on some of them. So the current pole is not tall enough to provide the height they need to reach the area they're trying to reach. So that's it. Now, our city-owned poles on Odom are probably tall enough, but the ones maybe along the boulevard, they may not be either. There's two things. One is, are they structurally sound enough to support the equipment? And the second is, are they tall enough also, or in some of the commercial areas? So that was, that was a discussion we had with some of the facility guys that we met with, was they were concerned about some of the stability or structural, you know, if they could attach something to it structurally and it still support that.
And I understand, and believe me, I don't want us to stay in the Stone Age in technology. I'd rather us be on the forefront... I'd rather us be on the forefront. But at the same time, sometimes I can make a point better by going to the extreme, so I will do that. Let's say that you ultimately decide in five years, we need 1,000 of these things in our town. I don't think it'll happen, but if it was 1,000. I don't much like the idea of adding 1,000 of these poles, additional poles, all over our town. You know, we have underground utilities for a reason, and one of the reasons is the aesthetics of it. And I'd hate to see, you know, a whole lot of poles going in. So, and that's why I ask about energy. So if you're committed to.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm committed. I, I'm not having the conversation with Entergy, but our attorneys are and have been. We just haven't come to terms with them yet.
Okay. Now, what the mayor was saying makes sense to me. Um, but if a streetlight, if you do work it out with energy and a streetlight is tall enough to, is not tall enough to be useful for your equipment, is there any way that you could put an extension on it to use that so we don't have another pole pop up?
Well, that's a, that's a question for one of my engineers. Honestly.
And what they did tell us is, you take the pole down. You take the existing streetlight down that's there and you place a new pole in its location. So that, that was what they explained to us could be done. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know that you'd want to attach something to the top of their pole, but, you know, basically it would become an AT&amp;T structure then with a streetlight mounted on top of it.
That's right.
That'd be okay, we wouldn't be adding another pole.
Right.
Yeah, we just replace the existing, okay. I'll quit bugging you, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Holt?
In the broadest sense of the word, not getting into detail, like you say, engineering is somebody else. Um, why, what are the pros and cons of why would we not want this? What, what is, what is it that we need or what is it that we think that we might not need? Why, why do we need it?
Well, because you want to be cutting edge, I think. You want to be ready for the future. You want to be ready for 5G, which is the next evolution of your cellphones, which is going to be a game changer. Once 5G gets here, we'll be able to do so many more things that, that you can't imagine that you could do on your cellphone device. I mean, if you want gigabit service, um, I think 5G will offer gigabit service, which is super fast service.
Right. And how, what timeframe out is that are we looking at? Couple of years, five years, 10 years?
I can't give you a timeframe, except we're trying to, we're trying to get there as quickly as we can on the, on 5G.
Is this, um, I'm like Alderman Saunders said, well, I go, I missed it, whatever, if you said it, but is this something, are we paying for this or are we collecting? Are you paying us for it? I mean, who's paying for all this? Where is the expense of it?
Well, we will pay you a one-time fee for the application and then we will pay a reoccurring fee to be in your right of way or if we co-locate on some of your facilities.
Will we most likely begin on Maumell Boulevard, if that's what I was understood? And will it go around the, um, Odom North-South Boulevard that circles, um, our town? Or so it'll eventually just scatter throughout the entire town? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, this is going to be where, where our network is most congested. And if that's on Maumell Boulevard, then that's where one of our small cell nodes will be.
When we get our interchange, we may have, we may use it out there. Okay, well, that, that's all I, I was just trying to get. I'll read, I have not read it. Uh, before I get back here, I will read it and maybe I'll be more educated about what.
So that means I have to come back? You want me to come back? I want to come back.
If you don't mind, which, that'd be great.
I wish I lived 103 Merrimar and I could just about walk over here.
I will tell you that they talked about hot zones. It's what they called them for us. I forgot what, uh, Mr. Dedman just called them, but hot zones is where they're used the, the most. Doctors' waiting rooms is one big area, and then schools. So that, those areas, I mean, you know, is where you're going to see a lot of usage and where it's going to pop in at, you know. So when people are sitting in a doctor's office waiting to see the doctor anymore, they don't just sit there and read a magazine. They're on their phones, either doing business or looking up stuff or playing videos or whatever, or playing games, so.
Or at a football stadium.
Or in a football stadium.
Right. So depending on what kind of pole you have in a given area, if we have to put up a new pole, we'll match whatever's in the area. If you have decorative poles, then we'll put up a decorative pole. If it's a wooden pole, we'll put up a wooden pole. You want us to hide it, we'll try to hide it.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Mr. Dedman, I guess I'm not through bugging you.
Yes, sir.
I keep hearing about this 5G, and I think that's great. You know, I, I love the new high-tech stuff myself.
Yes, sir.
But I know I'm going to be asked in the near future, 5G, is that downward compatible or does that? If we move into the 5G, what about the old LTE and the 4G and all that? Is it downward compatible to that? Or is everybody going to have to buy a new phone? Because I know I'm going to be asked this.
Well, when, when 5G rolls around, you'll have to probably, like you did when 4G came, get a new device.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And that would extend to tablets and, oh my goodness, okay.
You can start saving now.
Well, but 5G is not talking about download speed, it's fifth generational, is all that the G means. So, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, your, your phone still works, so it will still work there, it just may not have the speed of what everybody else that has 5G on their network has. So, because there's still people using phones that are not 4G capable.
Right. But you're not able, as the mayor said, you're not able to do all the things that you could do otherwise.
It, it's not going to stop you from using your phone. You just may not, your speeds may be a whole lot slower or you may not be able to down that huge file that you're trying to download.
Okay, you don't have to excuse, I'm a great-grandpa, so I'm not, you know, a teeny-bopper. So I don't know all this technology that, about phones, but, okay.
One other thing, Mayor, that I might mention, won't take me long and I'll be done. But, so AT&amp;T, uh, through the federal government, recently was awarded a contract to build a public safety network across the country, which means your, uh, fire and police, ambulance and all of those folks will have the, uh, the capability of talking to each other, okay? They'll be able to exchange other information with folks in Maumell. The folks in Maumell can talk to the folks in Little Rock or New York City on this same network. So small, our small cell effort will help with that effort as well.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I believe that all came out of Katrina, the initial discussions on that.
It did.
I was on that committee.
Were you really? Yeah, it did come out of Katrina, yep.
Councilmember Anderson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. And it's funny that you say that because I was just listening to a report about how much trouble they're having right now in the Panhandle of Florida with, um, a particular carrier not having enough, um, service because their tower's getting hit and that they're not being able to communicate with, um, some of the people that are lost right now. And they're hoping that that's just because they don't have cell service. So, um, I think the more capacity, the, the more that you can have redundant, um, systems, the better for public safety and just that, that, um, that, um, illustration. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dedman, for coming out, we appreciate it. This will be on second reading at the next council meeting, which is the 5th of November, and then third reading two weeks after that, so.
We'll be back.
And I haven't forgiven you for moving Margaret out of town, so.
But one day you're going to have both of us.
Okay, alright, okay.
You might not, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody else.
I'm still going to be here, though, so, yeah. Look forward to that. Alright. Uh, moving on to Mayor's comments. Um, just a reminder, the first two budget meetings are going to be October the 23rd and the 29th. Um.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, and we will provide a meal. It may be pizza, it may be, uh, chicken sandwiches, it may be hamburgers, uh, so.
Okay. Might get that one back to Steve's.
I'm sorry.
I didn't think.
Steve Mosley.
No, I gave one to you. I counted four people and I passed out four, but then I saw your, as I handed it to you. I knew Steve wasn't here. Um, and then, uh, uh, don't forget, fall cleanup continues through October the 19th. There's only two subdivisions left after today. Um, and so that will be, uh, continued through Friday. And it's been fairly light, seems like it. So I don't know for what reason, but it's just been light. Uh, and the, the scrappers beat us to it, is, that's the terminology they use for these people that drive around and pick through the stuff before we get to it. Uh, but we also got a report today that they may have went off of somebody's two-wheel dolly that they'd rolled their things out with. So it stayed out too long or something like that. So, uh, so be careful what you put out there during a, a bulky items cleanup timeframe. Uh, I'd written, I'd written down that, uh, Central Arkansas Water, we got our first sanitation collection, but Ms. Vega had already mentioned that. Uh, we received it last week and then with a, we received a check from the Howard Department on the big reimbursement that she referenced also. We received that on Friday. And then the interchange will bid on October the 24th. There's currently five plan holders as of the 10th of this month. That's the latest update they have on their website. But it's, uh, uh, well, I know, I know four of the firms. One of them that's actually holding the plans is Mobley Contractors. They're the ones who built the White Oak Crossing roadway formerly known as Counce Massey. And then McGeorge Contracting, uh, they're a large firm out of Pine Bluff, but they own land in the area. They also own Jeffrey Sand and Gravel, so they're very familiar with the area. Uh, Manhattan Road and Bridge is another one there out of Tulsa, Oklahoma, but they're doing the work on 630 currently and doing that work down through there. And then the, another one is Keywit, and they're doing the work. They did all the work on Cancel Road on the, on ramp that they built on Cancel Road. And then they're also working on Rodney Param right now, I believe is where they're working. And then there's one other firm out of Missouri that I'm not aware of, so. So it seems like, uh, at least four good firms, probably five good firms that could do the project. So hopefully the, the bids will come in good. So that's what we're hoping for now.
How are the easements going?
Uh, that's through the Howard Department. Uh, uh, we don't keep track of it, uh, but they said it would not delay the bid opening, so. Uh, Planning Commission report, that will be done at the next, uh, meeting after the Planning Commission. Yeah, but it'll be done on the 5th, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, councilmember comments? Alright, go on, go on, go on. Alright, city attorney's comments?
I would encourage everyone to do a little bit of research on small cells. Um, uh, there are some aesthetically pleasing small cell towers and there are some that aren't. Um, uh, we've tried to address that a little bit in this ordinance. This is one of those ordinances that would, I would not be offended in the slightest if y'all looked at things and it went back to first reading. Quite frankly, uh, that may happen anyways. Uh, um, but look into it, it's, it's, it's a really big deal, um, a bigger deal. It's going to, it's going to be one, and I've said this one other time as city attorney, and it was with the sign ordinances, is that what's happening here is really going to change, maybe quite literally, the landscape of cities across the nation. And, uh, in a lot of ways, we're finding that cities are being preempted. The FCC's come out with a bunch of rules, a whole lot of rules. Uh, we anticipate, uh, both state legislation and federal legislation dealing with this. Um, and so research it and not just the legal issues, just research the technology. Um, you'll find plenty of, uh, great stories and plenty of horror stories out there. But it's a big deal, and so do your homework on it, please.
And, and this is very similar to when the dishes first came out. You had the huge five-foot diameter dishes that were in people's front yards. Those were banned in Maumell. I mean, they actually were, they were banned in Maumell. But then the FCC made a ruling, you couldn't regulate where those went. You know, now luckily, by the time that had came out, the small dishes were coming on. But we even said they had to be in the rear of the property, I think, at one point in time. And that's, you know, you can't do that because it has to be visible to the satellites and that sort of thing, and it may not work in your rear. In fact, I had a neighbor, theirs was in their front yard out by the road, looking up to the sky, because that was the only place, that was the only place they could put it where that didn't have tree coverage that was blocking their view. So, uh, but they, they built a flower bed around it, so it wasn't, you know, after a while it kind of disappears, you know, so.
If Mr. Dedman might could bring a picture or something that we could have visual.
Well, we can, we can provide you with plenty of pictures, but he, yeah.
Would it be alright for us to see something? I mean, I, I have no idea what it, what it looks like.
Well, he showed you some in those pictures that were there tonight that looked like a streetlight, but we can provide, I mean, there's some without them. We can provide you pictures. I mean, we, I mean, he doesn't need, he doesn't have to, but I, we'll get you some pictures.
With Entergy, I have a streetlight that I've called five times and left word having some executive call me, anybody, and that it's been out on the corner of my house for four, for two months, and they will not respond.
Have you notified Mr. Neri?
Yeah.
I haven't called Jim Neri, I, I just called the, the Entergy and, and we go round and round and round and.
Well, that's why I suggest you call Mr. Neri.
The crews cut it that was building, putting in new cable. They, uh, they, they came out to fix it.
Okay.
And they thought it was a light bulb, no, it, it's not getting power, so.
Okay, then.
Just have to come back to reconnect.
Okay, then that's, yeah, that's going to be a totally different crew that comes out then, so, yeah. So that does take a lot longer, yeah. If they actually came out, that's, that's good news, so.
It, in spite of my, it just didn't get the message across to, you know.
Okay.
Anyway, it's, I understand.
Alright.
All your comments?
Yes, that was it, thank you.
Alright, Madam City Clerk?
No comments, but a question for Councilmember Holt. Would you like me to send you a copy of the video presentation so you could see the, uh, poles that they were referring to? Or would you just, are you just asking for pictures?
Just one simple picture, just to get a concept of what it looks like up there on a pole or wherever it is. I don't, I, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
We can, we'll get some pictures. We'll either get them from AT&amp;T or we'll get you some pictures.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, uh, just remember, there's a candidate forum Thursday night at the First Baptist Church at 6:30, and then early voting will start next Monday. So, uh, just, uh, be mindful of that. Uh, and the haunted house in Carnival is the 27th and 31st for the Maumell Youth Council, and I saw several of those sitting in the back, uh, tonight, uh, because that's one of their requirements, is they have to attend a council meeting.